Good evening. Welcome to the City Council Meeting for Tuesday, August 2nd, 2022. Ms. Hilbrik, if you'll please call roll.
Councilman Deligarz?
I am present.
Councilman Crocker?
Here.
Councilwoman Scott?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Young?
Here.
Mayor Bocknight?
Here.
Councilwoman Solis and Councilman Lofgren will not be joining us.
Okay, and if everyone will please rise for the pledges, followed by a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. Again, we got a packed house tonight. Welcome to everybody that's out there. We look forward to hearing from you in just a minute. Reminder to fill out the green card if you wish to speak before us. Mr. Garza, do you have any announcements or reminders?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We do not.
Okay, thank you. Public and employee recognitions. We have two on the docket tonight. Ms. Hilbrik?
The first item is the Farmers Market Week proclamation. So whereas Victoria farmers and ranchers provide citizens with access to healthful, local, and regionally-produced foods through farmers' markets, which are expanding and evolving to accommodate the demand for a diverse array of agricultural products, and whereas farmers' markets and other agricultural direct marketing outlets provide infrastructure to assist in the distribution of farm and value-added products, thereby contributing approximately $9 billion each year to the U.S. economy, and whereas farmers' markets serve as significant outlets by which small-to-medium, new-and-begging, and veteran agricultural producers market agricultural products, generating that revenue that supports the sustainability of family farms and the revitalization of rural communities nationwide, and whereas the Victoria City Council recognizes the importance of expanding agriculture marketing opportunities that assist and encourage the next generation of farmers and ranchers generate farm income to help stimulate business development and job creation, build community connections through rural and urban linkages, and more. Whereas the Victoria Farmers Market has been in operation for over 35 years, including six years as an official program of the Food Bank of the Golden Crescent, prompting unprecedented growth for the market as well as increased access to fresh, locally-grown and produced foods for people in the greater Victoria area. Whereas the Victoria Farmers Market supports more than 60 local farms and food producers and small businesses from throughout South Texas, providing year-round opportunities for those businesses to sell wares to the public. Now therefore, I, Jeff Bocknight, Mayor of the City of Victoria, do hereby proclaim the week of August 7th through 13th, 2022, as Victoria Farmers Market Week in Victoria, Texas, to further awareness of farmers' markets' contributions to our lives in conjunction with the observance of National Farmers Market Week. I call upon Victoria's citizens to celebrate farmers' markets with appropriate observance and activities.
It is on. Okay, there it is. My name is Meredith Byrd. I work for the Food Bank of the Golden Crescent as the manager of the Victoria Farmers Market. And today, I'm here to thank you very much for this proclamation. As it states, our local farmers' market supports more than 60 local farms, artisans, small businesses throughout the greater Victoria area. Our farmers' market is held twice a week, on Wednesdays and Saturdays, year-round, at the Patty Dodson Public Health Center. We are proud to offer a wide variety of local foods, including seasonal produce, pastured meats and eggs, all sorts of homemade baked goods, salsas, jellies, pickles, plants for your garden and for your home, and select handmade artisan items. And I just can't thank you enough for your support of our market. I feel very honored to be the market manager and really appreciate this proclamation and this recognition. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Byrd. All right, next, we're gonna have Keep Victoria Beautiful Beautification Award, and I'm gonna ask Ms. Yucur to come up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am here once again to award our August Beautification Award winner. And before I do that, I just want to remind everyone, we have a next cleanup coming up. September 24th is our fall sweep. And any group, anybody that wants to sign up can go to keepvictoriabeautiful.org for our citywide litter-roadway cleanup. I'm here to introduce Jonas Titus. He is one of our board members on Keep Victoria Beautiful, and he will announce our winner.
Thank you, Chrissy. Always a crowd for Chick-fil-A, so. Keep Victoria Beautiful is honored to present the Business Beautification Award for the month of August to M4 Restaurant and Hospitality Group. This is the parent company of Chick-fil-A on Constitution Street. Chick-fil-A was established in Victoria in 1980 with their first local restaurant in the Victoria Mall. Chick-fil-A has made a name for itself in Victoria, not only as a restaurant, but also as an outstanding community partner that invests heavily in Victoria. M4 currently employs 135, ranging from their restaurant team members to executive leadership. And with the opening of their new location on Rio Grande, that number is expected to rise to about 200. After working out of an office in a historic home and loving the charm and character and convenience of downtown Victoria, David and Tammy Murphy chose a space on Constitution Street as the space for the M4 Restaurant and Hospitality Group, corporate offices, and Chick-fil-A Victoria Team and Community Resource Center. They are proud partners, contributing to a healthy and vibrant downtown Victoria, and also a huge partner and sponsor of all of our cleanup events, and we couldn't thank them more for that support. So with that, M4 Restaurant and Hospitality Group is our August Award winner. And if y'all want to say a few words, thank you.
Mayor and Council, as y'all know, Tammy and I are both native Victorians, born and raised here. And we love our city, and we're proud to have just, even if in a small way, contributed to a vibrant and healthy downtown. So thank y'all very much. I'd also like to take the opportunity to present Mr. Mayor with a book from Chick-fil-A's founder, Esth Truitt Cathy, entitled Eat More Chicken and Inspire More People.
All right, with that, that concludes the public and employee recognitions, unless you have something further, Mr. Garza?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, items from council. Thank you. Go around the horn? I have something. Got some prepared statements, and I'll try to make it not just boring by reading the whole thing. But, and it deals with library books. I know what most people are in, well, besides the ones that are here for Chick-fil-A and the cookies, libraries are a big topic of discussion tonight in citizens' communications. And I don't want the public to think that the City Council hasn't been addressing this issue. There were big comments made in Commissioner's Court yesterday pertaining to the library. And I spoke to the county judge this morning, and he just assured me that there's zero interest in evicting the city from the library. It is a county-owned building. But the county was just made aware of these books. Yesterday, in feeling impotent, I'm sure heated comments were made. So as you know, over the past eight months or so, we've been taking feedback and listening to people in the community about the library books. This latest set of books that they've brought in are really appalling. And I don't think they should be in the library. Remember, I'm one vote. But I'm asking this topic to be on next meeting's agenda, so we can publicly discuss it. As you know, just because I am speaking about it now in Items from Council, or the citizens get up here, it's not specifically listed on our agenda. And as such, Opens Meetings Act requires us not to speak on it. Okay? But it will be on next meeting's agenda. And just to lay out what my plan is that I would like to talk about, so everyone can think about it, is I'd like to ask, and we have asked, for an updated policy on books, and I can send you all my notes later, too, if y'all would like. The policy of the collection for the books that go into 17 years and younger. And this policy, from what I understand, should be developed with library staff and presented to Library Advisory Board for approval and ratification. But I think it should reflect our community's values. Said that I wanted like a deadline by the end of September. If it's not resolved by that time, the policy update, I'm gonna ask that we have a resolution on the agenda that we can discuss and vote on that would freeze future collection purchases or additions to the library. Until such time, we can get that policy in effect. And if we can't, then I think we may have to assume that policymaking authority and direct that policy ourselves. The big impediments to this policy, and this is a big one, is the definition of what those books means. We can all decide on what is appropriate and what's not, and we might have differing opinions on that. But we still need a verbal or a written definition of what those books mean. And it's very hard to put into words. But it has to be written, so we can put it into the policy without just saying, "I know it when I see it." And then also, we have to ensure that we're not trampling on First Amendment rights. But we need to do it in a manner that protects our children, right? That's what this is about, is being the adult in the room and providing guidance to protect the children. So aside from this policy change, there's other courses of action that we can discuss. I have no opinion on them right now. I was just trying to brainstorm some of them. We can remove and appoint new members to the Library Advisory Board that meet the City Council's objectives. We can develop and pass an ordinance that would prevent, an ordinance instead of policy, that would prevent those books. But we're still stuck with the determination of what those books are. And we can also just keep going with the process and evaluate and appoint new members as terms expire and continue going down that path. One thing I would like to ask of the crowd that's out there is that the books that you've provided with us, I think that you've seen applause up here. I don't think there's any disagreement from most of the council on this. I think we need to have a good public discussion about it, though. We owe that to y'all. And I would like to see these books go through the challenge process. Let's get it started, because I don't know that all these books that we've seen have gone through the challenge process that's set forth by the library. And I would just ask someone, please take the lead on that. If y'all would rather it be me, someone let me know. I'll go file everything. But they need to be challenged, because the ones that I've seen do not need to be in the library. And with that, I have no other items for council, and got through most of my notes. So, thank you for indulging me. We'll close items from council and get into citizens' communication. And if there's anybody else out there besides the 20 that want to speak, feel free to turn in a green card. Remember, three minutes is the limit. I will cut everybody off, because three minutes for 20 people ends up being five minutes for 20 people. And we want to hear from everybody, and we want everybody to have a fair chance to speak. So, please, don't be offended if I do stop you at the three-minute mark, because I'm gonna keep the meeting moving along. Nadia, I must butcher a lot of these names. Pittendrick? Yeah? I mean, I figure I gotta practice with Bocknight, so.
Thank you so much, everybody who's present today, for your goodwill and your willingness to listen to the diversity of opinion about the books. If I had known that you were gonna make the statement that you just did, I might have changed mine, but I'm gonna go ahead and represent. So the bottom line of what I have to say today to the City Council is an invitation to everyone to dial down the drama and not get confused. The issue, as it's been framed by the many citizens here today, is whether or not to make pornography readily available in the library to young children. Yet contrary to their misleading presentations, no one here is trying to make sure that children have pornography available to them. The real issue is not whether books that have sex or gay people in them is actually pornography, like this group would have you believe. The real issue lies deeper. While I have not looked at every word of all the books in question, I've looked at some. And I know what I saw at the hearing at the Library Board meeting in December. And it was clear that the actual objection of this group, who brought these objections, had nothing to do with pornography, but instead treating everything that touches upon LGBTQ issues as if it were pornography. This is what I saw. There were 21 books in question, and a woman got up and repeated wild, spectacular, shocking talking points from a national movement to smear teachers, librarians, and beloved members of the LGBT community, straight off of TikTok or podcasts. And she showed cartoon images on an overhead of undeniably hardcore graphic stuff that anyone would agree is X-rated, stuff that if it were in a movie would be given an X-rating. But it only came out much later in the hearing that those images did not come from any of the 21 books that were up for consideration. What we're talking about instead is stuff on the level of two male penguins hatching an egg together in a German zoo, a real story, which is being treated as if it should be given an X-rating. What is revealed is that they think that not being heterosexual is inherently X-rated. And so what I want is for the City Commission, for the City Council, to dial down the drama. The danger is for everyone to give in to extreme and unfounded fear. What I submit to you is that the standpoint that treats something as harmless as two penguins as if it were porn is the standpoint that not being heterosexual is a dangerous disease that spreads, a pandemic. And I will add, to not make any distinction between hardcore porn and two penguins is not only irrational and wrong, it's a waste of your time and taxpayer resources, who are paying you to solve real problems in the city, like how do we get the economy going? How do we revitalize the downtown? I do think there are people in this room who would have no problem saying that homosexuality is a dangerous disease that spreads.
Pittendrick? Wrap it up real quick.
And they're assuming that everybody agrees with them. But when no one challenges them at the dinner table, or the kid across the street is eating dinner and doesn't argue with them when they say stuff, that doesn't mean this is the community view. It's the view of a part of the community. And what I want to say is there is no reason to treat sexuality that's different from your own like it's a toxin. I want to say that a lot of what is actually going on here today has to do with whether or not it's right to let young people feel like it's okay to be who they are. That's the thing this group wants to control. They don't want young people who regard themselves as gay to think it's all right, that what they are is okay. I assert to the commission that it is not knowledge that it's not okay. What tallies with your reality? Having a young person who thinks they're gay be okay with that? Is that all right, or not?
Thank you, Ms. Pittendrick. Mr. Kenny Jones?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Good to see you.
Folks, I came to encourage the adoption for the community block grant. We are a recipient this year for a sum of little over $12,000 that we're gonna use to do a slight renovation of our shelter with new linens, new blankets, pillows, and mattresses for our folks. It's always good to get a good night's sleep. It's always good to have a breakfast before you go out. And then this gives them the energy and the courage to go out and face another day. So this money will be put to good use. We appreciate the opportunity, being able to apply. I also want to personally give my appreciation to Julie and Ms. Manchaca. They do a great job in helping me, because I'm a little bit challenged when it comes to paperwork. So I appreciate them. I did not intend on speaking to the matter that you brought up. I applaud your courage for bringing that up in the manner that you did. And to think that a child can make any decision that adults grapple with is just bizarre to me. You know, it's funny that I'm a big Andy Griffith fan. If you're not, sorry. But I'm a big Andy Griffith fan. And there was an episode when Opie befriended a hobo. And the hobo tried to instill in Opie that the best thing to believe in life was the best time to start a new project is tomorrow. And so this became Opie's philosophy, and he didn't want to clean his room, this, that, and the other, and he started getting in a little trouble. So Andy kinda escorted the hobo out of town, basically, by asking him, you know, you need to move on. And he said, "I'll do that." But he said, "Why don't you let Opie make up his own mind?" And Andy said, "No, no, you don't understand. You don't let a child make up their own mind, because they'll grab at the first shiny hook and flashy lure that they find, and before they know it, and before they can change their mind, they're already hooked." And so, no, you cannot let a child make up their mind on issues such as what we're talking about that are gonna change the rest of their life. We have to lead them until they're old enough to make that decision. So I wasn't gonna comment on that, but I think it is important. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. William Myers? Easy across? Okay, we'll come back to him. Ms. Bridgette Cisneros?
Good afternoon, council and committee. My name is Bridgette Cisneros, and I'm here today because on April 8th, 2013, my husband and I received a letter from the city stating that we would be having neighbors in a land that's on the left of us, of our house. It's not a complete lot, because the people that originally had lived there sold part of it to the Railroad Commission. So now they own it. These people were informed that they could move a house in five feet from our fence. Well, they moved in a trailer, and it seems to be five feet from the fence. But when they added back stairs and then a runway for their pit bull, their German shepherd, and their Chihuahua dog against our yard, it's now up against our fence, and the dogs run in between our bedroom and our daughter's bedroom, and they bark all night long. I don't know what happened to the five-foot rule, but it's basically five inches away from our fence. And that's why I'm here today to address this, to see if something can be done. We went to the, my husband went to the City Development Center before they started building these back stairs, so they could take a look at it to see if it was admissible. And they just drove by and took a quick glance and went on. And so I would like if somebody could come out. I don't know who would do this, but if they could come out and observe the place and see if it is permissible. They're like on top of us, literally. It doesn't seem fair. Their pit bull is always getting loose. He runs the neighborhood. And one week, I called animal control five times. They came out once, because they said they couldn't do anything about it, because their facility was full. So the dog's running loose everywhere. And she doesn't seem to be friendly, because she fights with my dog through the fence. You see the viciousness in her. And there's times where I couldn't leave my home, because the dog's running in front of our house or where I park. So I called the police on it, since animal control couldn't do anything. And Officer Barnett came out, and he said, "Well, literally, there's nothing they could do unless the dog bit me or attacked me. Then some action would be taken after that." And I believe that about covers everything. They're too close to us. The dogs run, like I said, in front of our bedroom windows. 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning, they're barking. My husband goes to work at 5:30. They have other part of their land where they have a big ol' cage where they could put the dogs in, but they don't seem to do it. I don't know why. They just have them against our fence where they're right there.
All right, thank you, Ms. Cisneros. I think Ms. Fulgrim will get with you, maybe walk out with you and get some information with you and maybe help you.
Okay, I have some photos as well. All right.
She can help you. Thank you. Mr. David Brown?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Manager. I've been asked to appear here to express my interest in serving the city through the Building and Standards Committee. I'm happy to do that. Thank you. And I hope that you'll give me favorable consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Myers, did he make it over from across the street yet?
He's gonna just speak when that item comes up. We'll give him a few minutes.
That'll work. Mr. Ronnie Flake?
Thank you for your time this afternoon. I will be referring to the book number five in your packet. The book is rated for 12-year-olds in our public library. I'm here today to protect the innocence of our children through content of age-appropriate books purchased with our tax dollars, including even donated books. The book has illustrations of a variety of body parts and sex acts that are just too vulgar to describe. I want to read from one of the pages. It says here, it says, "A great place to search fantasies and kinks safely is on the internet." Do you really think that's a good place for our children to go? Do you think it's really safe for our children to be checking out their sexual activities on the internet? I continue. There are tons of people and communities out there who share your interests and have all kinds of advice. The online world is also chock-a-block full of prof- The online world is also chock-a-block full of professionals and amateurs alike sharing their sexy adventures online." This is for children that are 12 years and up. I'll read from another page and I'll be finished. Watching porn intrudically can have you with unrealistic expectations about what to do in the bedroom. So do yourself a favor and consume it with a hefty pinch of salt. At the same time, remember that the people you see on camera are real human beings and they deserve your respect. I am honored and pleasure to be standing with a group of people today that are trying to protect our children. And I thank you for taking a look at this item for us. God bless you.
Thank you, Mr. Flake. Mr. John Clegg. Come back to Mr. Clegg. Mr. Hester, Jim Hester.
Hello again. Thank you for taking the time to listen to what I have to say. You may recall that basically eight weeks ago, I got up here and talked about how the Time Life Science Books made such a big impact on me and how it helped me develop in high school and stuff like that. And in the middle of all that, or past all that, I heard some of these discussions that they're talking about today about how are people dealing with other topics and stuff like that. So I, you may recall that I went and looked and said, I'm going to try to study up some of that stuff and see what I could find. And you may recall that I said there was a sex reassignment doesn't work. Here's the evidence dated 3/9/2018 by Dr. Ryan T. Anderson. And it also was using Dr. Paul McHugh, the university distinguished service professor of psychology at Johns Hopkins University of Medicine. And it pointed out the most thorough follow-up of sex assignment people extended over 30 years and conducted in Sweden where the culture is strongly supported of the transgendered, documented their lifelong mental unrest. 10 to 15 years after the surgical reassignment, the suicide rate for those had undergone sex reassignment surgery rose to 20 times that of comparable peers. Recently, there's been an article that came out on BBC News dated roughly 7/28/22 that the Natural Health Service is closing a place called Tramskåk, which is a child gender identification clinic. There was a case of a woman named Cara Bell, who's now aged 25. She was prescribed puberty blockers at the age of 16, then received testosterone shots a year later, and at the age of 20, had double mastectomy. She later changed her mind over the decision to transition to male. She argued that the clinic should have challenged her more over her decision to make transition. In Ms. Bell's case, the High Court ruled that under-16s lack capacity to give informed consent to the treatment. Basically, they told to shut down the clinic in September and basically after an independent review was said it was criticized. Ms. Bell told BBC Radio 4, World at One, "I went through a lot of distress as a teenager. Really, I just needed some mental health support and therapy from everyone that I've been through." There needs to be mental health support first and more tolerant. If I found that one of my kids' impressionable minds had been fed issues leading to their transgendered and subsequent committed suicide, I would pursue legal action against those that fed those ideas and those who had an authority knowingly allowed those ideas to be fed to them. And wouldn't you do the same? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hester. Mr. John Clegg.
Hi there. I was, I made application for the Buildings and Standards Commission, and I do support that, that activity vigorously. But I would, at this time, like to withdraw my name from consideration. It's come to my attention that you've got some other very good candidates, and I would like to ask you to consider Mr. David Brown for that position. And if for some reason he can't serve, I'd be willing to, so.
Thank you, Mr. Flake.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I've lived in Victoria for about the last three years, and I've been a regular library user, as I was when I lived in San Antonio, Austin, Yocum. Tonight, I would like to commend the staff of the Victoria Public Library for the work they have done to make the library inclusive to all members of the community. I grew up in a small farm where my parents struggled to make ends meet. Many of my classmates were blessed by better economic advantages. Fortunately, my parents instilled in me a love of reading. I spent a lot of time in school libraries. It was there that I learned there were a lot of opportunities even for a farm boy like me. It was through books that I learned much about my place in the world. I could identify with many of the characters in the books that I devoured. Dating myself a little, most of what I read in grade school was reflective of a world populated by white Christian males and, to less important, white Christian females. Did I mention it was a small town and long ago? When I got to high school, I found there were a whole bunch of people who did not identify the same way as I did. There were people of other races, other religions, other cultures. Just as reading had helped me discover my identity, so did reading help me to understand the beliefs, hopes, and dreams of the others, others who were as valuable as human beings as I was. I might have had a difficult time understanding all these societal changes if I had not been kept aware by dedicated librarians who encouraged my love of reading. It has been said that we cannot raise our children in the way that we were raised because the world we were raised in no longer exists. I remember having a class in school that taught us how to dial a rotary telephone. Really dating myself now. The world has changed. Books that we have the opportunity to read must change with the times. Books help us to understand both our place in the world and the place of others who are different than we are. There are those who say it is the parent's job to teach their children how to navigate the world and understand the people in it. In a perfect world, that might be true. As a former teacher, I know that is not how it works in real life. I've seen way too many unprepared students. Everyone deserves to be able to find characters and stories they can identify with, to see their hopes, their struggles, their triumphs, and their dreams, to see that they are not alone in this rapidly changing world. We're unlike in fairy tales. The stories don't often end with, and they lived happily ever after. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fisk. Mr. Scott Bauer.
Appreciate all of you guys. I just want to let you know that. I've been a native Victorian, born and raised in this beautiful city, and seen a lot, done a lot. And growing up, the Victoria Library was actually a big part of my childhood. I remember many, many times, same building, just dating myself. And then we, my wife and I, we homeschooled our kids for about 14 years. I say we, but she did 99% of the work, maybe 99.9. But all five of our kids, the library was a weekly event. And so the library is a big part of Victoria, always has been, always will be. And I just want to kind of bring some clarity to this whole issue that this is not an issue that anti-library, anti-library staff, anti-all this, anti-that. This is, again, protecting the innocence of children. As a dad, that is the one thing that I have with my kids is to protect them from something that you know could cause them harm. You know, it says that love rejoices in the truth. And I think through all of this issue as a community, like you said, Mayor Bognite, we're going to discuss this further. I welcome good discussion, but the truth will surface on what is good for our community. Victoria's always been a conservative city, filled with loving people that care about other people, not just themselves, very including community. And we will continue to be that, but we have to fight to continue to keep a conservative base, to continue to have that environment of love. The truth will set us free, but the truth is what we're striving for here today. And I just wanted to say that the innocence of children is what this issue about. And as you can tell from your packets, and if you were to put some of this stuff that even you said was appalling on the front page of The Advocate, 99% of Victoria would, your phones would be ringing off the hook. What is this? So the public really does not know what information that we have seen, and we're just saying this has no right to have access to our children. And all we were asking for at the beginning was put them on the top shelf, just have them away. And if you have a parent that wants it, check it out for their kids. If they want their kids to be all in that stuff, then have at it. But put it on a top shelf, and it should not be available for every kid, any kid, to come around. You know, there's a story even when I was growing up of a friend of mine that came across a dirty magazine when he was a little kid and got all enthralled in this stuff. And I mean, he battled a entire life to set the stage. It planted so much seeds in him that it completely derailed him for the rest of his life. He's no longer with us now. But I'm just saying that seed just caused so much confusion, so much hurt. That is what I'm trying to protect my kids from and the kids of community from. So thank you for your consideration. Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Mayor, City Council, thank you for listening this afternoon. My name is Stan Rinke. I've been a citizen of Victoria County for the last 25 years. To be very honest with you, there are a lot of places I would rather be than standing here in front of you this afternoon talking about this particular subject. My mama taught me better than to say some of the words that I'm going to say to you this afternoon and to the public in general. But I want to share these with you to make you aware of what's available. It's come to our attention, and obviously to your attention, many times over, over the last several weeks, that age-inappropriate, sexually explicit, obscene literature is being purchased with our tax dollars and has been made available to children eight years and up in the Victoria Public Library. So that you'll know this is a clear violation of Texas Penal Code 43.21. So that you're aware of the nature of some of this literature, I want to offer some quotes from just one of the books that is in the packet that you have received. And this particular book is item number 10 in your packet. And I quote, "Nipples can feel very good to touch. Like other holes in our body, the anus is usually very sensitive, which means it can feel good to touch. Having a penis isn't what makes you a boy. Having a vulva isn't what makes you a girl. The truth is much more interesting than that. Maybe you're called a boy, but you know you're a girl. You know how girls are treated and what they do. That's how you want to be treated and what you want to do. Maybe you're called a girl, but you feel like a boy. You know how boys are treated and what they do. That's how you want to be treated and what you want to do. What do you think about the word boy and girl? Do you know anyone for whom these words don't fit? Ad infinitum, ad nauseam. Is concerned citizens, parents, grandparents, in my case, great-grandparents? We implore you all to become more aware of the inappropriate literature that's being offered in our own library and exercise your authority and your purse strings to have all this type of literature removed from Victoria Public Library. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rinke. Mr. Von der Rohe.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor. I came to talk about Cadillac converter thefts. The Victoria Police Department and the Sheriff's Department combined, and they stopped two of the suspects. And they're in jail. Well, probably not. They probably bailed out and they're doing the same thing again. But anyway, in Harris County, a deputy got shot and killed by two people getting Cadillac converters. And those two got charged with capital murder. He shot them before he died, and they went to the hospital to get help and, you know. They'll probably be on death row one day, you know. But also, I want to talk about Crime Stoppers. I don't know if you've heard of Detective Collins? I don't know if he... But anyway, he's in charge of Crime Stoppers. And I don't know if you know, the Victoria Police Department have the highest homicide clearance rate in the state of Texas, 85%. You know, if you want to kill someone, just don't do it in Victoria because they're going to catch you, you know. And I came also to complain about my landlord. He raised the rent in April and didn't tell anyone until yesterday. And so he raised it $60 without telling anyone. So six, from April to August, that's 60 times five, I want a $300 rebate plus the late fee times five, that's 125. So I want 125 plus three, I want a $425 rebate to all of them. And, you know, he is a distinguished attorney, you know, in Houston, and he is doing some very unethical things. And I would like to get a private attorney, maybe pay maybe $100 an hour. I can't pay like 400 an hour like he charges. And he should, and I have discussed some of the issues. And when I discuss them, he says, you know, I could evict you. And it is illegal for him to evict me for paying on time just because I'm complaining because I'm just speaking the truth. There's more issues, but I can't do it in three minutes. So I just wanted to thank the Victoria Police Department and the Sheriff's Department for solving the Cadillac converter crime. And thank Mark and the Chief of Police and the City of Council for making it tougher for, because they can only get $300 for each one. So if, if they get fined 500 for each one, they're, they're going negative 200 per one they catch. So they're on the losing end. But thanks and have a good day. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Council. Unfortunately, I am not very prepared today. I didn't come in prepared to speak, but, or earlier today, I was not, I did not prepare to speak. However, I am here in defense of the library, of books, of education. I'm a parent. I have two daughters. They are fairly young. They're 11 and 15. I don't have problems with my children reading things that might bother them or that might bother me. We have to be able to have conversations with our children about sex and sexuality. We live in a place, in a time where our children are, have all, all kinds of access to things like pornography. And if we don't teach our children the difference with nonfiction books that explain what a vulva is and a penis, because those are not bad words. We are human beings, and that is what many of us, that's what we have, among other things. So it is, it's important to keep these books for kids to have access to in case they need information that they are, they will find somewhere else. And they will find the information in a more dangerous way than in the library. I assure you, our books are not dangerous to our children. Books are not dangerous. Okay? Ideas, not dangerous. I also, when I was about 10 years old, I found a nudie magazine in a friend's dad's closet. And was I scarred for a little bit? Yeah. I talked to my parents about it, though, and I'm okay. I talked to my parents about it, though, and I'm okay. I assure you, as an adult, I am okay with that. As an adult, I do know the difference between pornography and books, and I can have those discussions with my children. If my children find a book at the library when they were young, they could sift through any book and bring it to me, and I could discuss it with them, okay? We have to have these conversations. So, thank you to our library board, our amazing librarians, right? These books are not just put on the shelves willy-nilly. Our librarians have master's degrees. They study. So, again, we're not talking about pornography on ourselves. So, thank you for hearing me and listening to me. Thank you.
Ms. McKenzie.
Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. I really applaud the Mayor for addressing this Victoria Public issue. My name is Prima Ranjan. I'm addressing the concerns of about over 70% of our community regarding, of course, the pornographic nature of books for children still available in the Victoria Public Library. It is not a question of banning books. It is a question of protecting our children and future generations from getting hold of books that could ruin their lives. You know that pornography and sexual perversion and sexual trafficking of children is rampant throughout this country. As law-abiding citizens of this community and of America, our actions or our nonactions can affect the moral climate that we live in. The problem is that we've taken God out of the schools, out of our libraries, out of our lives, and we are embracing a culture that may seem politically correct, but it is poisonous to our environment. You know, the scripture says above all else, "Guard your heart, for it is the wellspring of life." And keep corrupt talk and perverse speech far from your lips. Let your eyes be straight ahead. Take level paths with your feet. Do not turn to the right or the left. Keep your feet from evil. As adults, we can be resolute in guarding our hearts. But how do children guard their hearts? How do innocent, vulnerable children guard their hearts? Shouldn't we, as mature adults, do everything we can to protect children from being warped in their souls? Remember, a little yeast works through the whole batch of dough. A little bit of perversity in the Victoria Public Library can ruin all your efforts to promote good education in our community. And when has exposing our children to books of nudity and books of perverse content become a norm in our society? I, for one, don't want these perverse books for children to be in the public library. There may be people who may disagree or argue that this is curtailing their freedom, but I say to those parents who have abdicated, their role as parents, wake up. It is time to take a stand for what is right in this community. I leave you with one word: accountability. Please ponder on that word. Children need to be accountable to their parents who shepherd them rightly. Elected officials need to be accountable to their presents who have elected them. And lastly, we need to be accountable to God for our actions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ranjan. Mr. Dale Zuck.
I'm Dale Zuck. I want to apologize for what I'm going to be reading to you. This is about a book found inside the 12 and up. It is not, you can find it on page number 22 of the book that's, and you'll find it on the bridge side of the library. "He emerged from the bathroom, slinging off his tunic and shirt. I propped myself on my elbows to watch as he paused at the edge of the bed. My attention went right to the strong, clever fingers that unfastened his pants. Tamlin let out a low snarl of approval, and I bit my lip as he removed his pants along with his undergarden, revealing the proud, thick length of him. My mouth went dry, and I dragged my gaze up to his muscled torso, over the pains of his chest, and then, he said, 'Come here.' I pushed back the blankets, revealing my already naked body, and he hissed. His features turned ravenous while I crawled across the bed and rose up to my knees. I took his face in my hands, the golden skin framed on either side of the fingers of ivory and swirling black, and kissed him. I moaned, tilting my head back to give him better access. His hands clamped around my waist, then moved, one going to cut my rear, the other to slide. His tongue scraped the roof of my mouth, and he dragged a finger down the center of me. I gasped, my back arching. 'Fire,' he said against my lips. My name, and I felt like a prayer was being given to me. His tongue swept through my mouth again, in time to the finger that had slipped inside of me. My hips indolated, demanding more, craving the fullness of him, and his growl reverberated in my chest as he added another finger. I moved on to him. Lightning lashed through my veins, and my focus narrowed to his fingers. My mouth, his body on mine, his palm pushed against the bundle of nerves on the apex of my thighs, and I groaned. And I groaned. My head was thrown back. I gulped down night air, and then I was being lowered down, lower and lower into the bed. He stretched out above me, his head lowering to my breast, and all it took was one press of his teeth against my nipples before I was crawling at his back, before I hooked my legs around him, and he settled between them." This is the material that can be found in the Age 12 and Up Against the Bridge. You can find it, if you're looking for the name of the book, you'll find it on the library computer. It's very easy. If you don't remember the name, key word, it's very simple. It's the first time I've been in the library for many decades. It'll be the last. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zuck.
Mayor Bocknight, council members. There have been many conversations lately about books at the library. Understandably, people are afraid of censorship, book banning, a loss of freedoms. We all highly value individual liberty, free speech, and personal responsibility. However, there are some blind spots in those fears. One relates to the treatment of minors, and another involves the practical limitations of any library. Adults have many freedoms: make their own choices and live with the results. However, we do not treat minors like adults. In fact, we restrict their access to many things and protect them from decisions and information above their maturity level. Minors do not have the brain development, life experience, or emotional maturity for some decisions and some information. We expect parents to carry the burden for their children, but we also work to assist parents with various minimum age laws and policies. Our library has purchased some age-inappropriate and obscene materials and placed them in the area for children and teens. My children and I visit the library frequently, and we have seen several of these books. Some of them, written for children ages 5 to 10, include illustrations of sexual intercourse, images of adult genitalia, full-frontal adult nudity, and introductions to masturbation for 5- to 10-year-olds. They start to undermine the relationships between children and trusted adults in their life, like their parents and their doctor. After making a child doubt those adults, the authors then introduce sexual concepts and sexual activities. These are written to children approaching puberty, a time when it's natural to feel misunderstood by your parents, confused about romantic relationships, and dissatisfied with your body. The authors hijack those normal experiences, turn children against their parents, and then influence the child towards certain behaviors and beliefs. Another overlooked fact is that the library actually removes books all the time. The library does not have every book ever written. They don't have the shelf space or the funds for that. They choose where to place books in the library, as someone else has already mentioned. I requested that some of these be moved to the adult section so parents can adequately screen them, and my request was denied. We are simply asking how and why these decisions are made. Why is sexually charged content being provided to minors? We are adults, and it is reasonable to question which materials the library has purposely made accessible to minors. Parents should not have to worry that their relationship with their child will be undermined or their child will be exposed to mature sexual content simply because they walked into the library to the area for children and teens. Please encourage the library to adopt new practices or a children's collection policy that treats minors like minors.
Thank you. Now, Codera Julia, Julia Codera?
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Give me one second. Hello, Council. I have been closely watching the library issue evolve over the past several months. After watching Commissioner's meeting yesterday morning, it was crystal clear that this ruckus is way deeper than books. It's about power, bigotry, and pushing personal beliefs. The responses in yesterday's Commissioner's meeting were appalling. Mr. Ives and Mr. Burns going on to state, "We won't give them a platform," is an infringement on our First Amendment and indicates the narrow-mindedness that still persists in 2022. I understand that Mr. Ives has a right to say how he feels. However, as a person in local government, he has made it clear how he wants to use that power. He's proposed evicting the library on the basis of narrow views. It is clear he does not understand the value of how our library has served over 112,000 people this fiscal year and how over 24,000 people have attended various programs. Based on the numbers, the library is a place that is very resourceful to our community. As a mother to two young boys, the library has been valuable in my life. Beginning with baby time, it was a refuge for me as a new parent. I was able to meet other parents and find books to help me understand the mental and physical changes that my body was experiencing. I am proud that our local library is part of the American Library Association as well as the Texas Library Association. The mission of these organizations is to unite and amplify voices of the library community through advocacy, education, intentional equity, diversity, and inclusion. I implore the Council to review these organizations and understand the importance of defending Victoria's citizens' rights to have access to all books and resources. For the most recent data, found as of 2020, Victoria has 16.5% of its population living in poverty, and less than 19% hold a bachelor's degree. Education is the key to helping Victorians reach their full potential. When Council, the Mayor, and the City Manager make decisions that could possibly start censoring books due to pressure and intimidation, you are limiting the potential of our youth. Censorship thrives in ignorance. But honestly, the real issue in our town is not so much access to books, as it is the push of religious conservative thoughts as the only option. There are books on the shelf that I wholeheartedly disagree with, but it's very easy for me to walk right past these. These books, such as Billy Graham, Rush Limbaugh, Tucker Carlson, and the like, I'm able to walk right past them. They don't magically fall off the shelf or force me to look at them. I also have never had my children running through the facility and accidentally see something that they shouldn't. I supervise my children, and I am responsible for what they check out or borrow. But if they did have questions about books they didn't understand, as their parent, it's my job to educate, to educate them on the fact that we live in a community where people think differently, pray to a different God, but yet this place is a shared place, a place where librarians with years of education strive to meet their diverse needs and interest...
You can wrap it up in the next 15 seconds.
I understand. Thank you. I am proud of my Victoria Public Library, and I'm disappointed on the threats they have received, and I'm against censoring books. I urge Council to have a backbone and stand for intellectual freedom.
Thank you, Ms. Julia. Ms. Kim Pickens.
Does that mean, sir? The Victoria Public Library has existed for over 50 years to give equal access to books and other media to every citizen of Victoria, both city and county. There are processes and recommendations that have been in place for decades on how money is spent and which items are included in the current collection. During times of crisis, the library has served as a beacon of access, like after Harvey, where we all found ourselves without electricity or internet to contact FEMA or loved ones. Libraries are the last bastions of the First Amendment left in our country, a place where there is an intentional desire to give all citizens an opportunity to ask questions and access information without judgment. What I hear when people have stood up and voiced their concerns over books they believe children shouldn't be allowed to access, I have noticed a disturbing trend. The commentary all boils down to conversations on equity, diversion, and inclusion. The men and women who stand before you to stop the library from having certain books in their collection is not because they perceive these books to be dangerous to children, but because they do not fit their own personal narrative of the way they want the world to look. They choose to ignore the fact that the world in Victoria are not reflective of who they want in their lives. These people will stand and state that they don't hate LGBTQI people, and then in the next sentence tell you how their existence goes against God. They will say they are not racist, but believe that books discussing the realities of being the only black girls in town is an inappropriate book. The irony of that book being on the hit list is the subject matters about feeling alone in a town that doesn't value you because you are different from the majority of residents in your community. The real fear for the people asking the library to ignore the Constitution is equity, diversion, and inclusion. I've listened to months of meetings where people stand before you and spew conspiracy theories that are so far-fetched it is frightening. They feel as if their country is being taken away from them, when the truth is we are finally acknowledging that America and Victoria have residents that are from many countries, cultures, religions, and more that are finally being acknowledged and heard. This is important because we have a four-year university, a resident medical program, and plants that recruit from all across Texas and the country looking for people to learn, work, and make a life here for their families. Many of those people do not identify as white, and some may not be Christian, but that's the beauty of diversity. Look at our city government. There is a diversity in the staff that runs this city. They make Victoria better by bringing their collective experiences to the table. If we don't acknowledge and accept people because they don't think or look like us, we stand to watch our city die as young people move away because of rigid and hateful beliefs. What we need is to support our city, which has been doing their job well for decades. Their library has done what they have been told, what they have been hired to do. We need to stop entertaining suggestions that there are only certain people who can live in Victoria and believe certain things. Our rights to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness cannot be denied because someone believes something differently. Please stand up and support the library and its staff upholding the integrity of our American values.
Ms. Pickens. Ms. Cindy Brewer.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. I was not planning on speaking because I said there wouldn't be any speaking, so I have my notes on a napkin. First of all, I am not against people who are homosexual, who have homosexual attractions, are gay, but I am against any books in the library that have graphic sexual pictures, be it real or cartoons. And as far as what happened in December, I saw one of the books, whether that, now I'm hearing that apparently it was not from the library. But some of the things I've already heard just today, we don't need that much graphic pictures, especially for 12-year-olds. Then, I'm curious, I just wanted to make this statement. I'm curious as to whether the library keeps magazines such as Penthouse and Playboy. And if so, are they kept where all the magazines are? Or do you have to request those? And if so, I feel that should be the same thing for books about sex for children. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brewer.
Hello, everybody. I'm only going to speak for myself. My husband and I have lived all around the world by military, and we are thankful to be here in Victoria. I've worked for VISD as a library assistant. I've done a lot of volunteer work. One of the things I've been doing is homeschooling my children, and one of the things I also do is go to the public library. A lot of things I've heard about these books, they have been in the... A lot of things I've heard about these books, they have been in the library, and they've been there for a long time. But what I don't see is those books just hopping out and dancing. What I also don't see is a lot of the men up here reading these books like a Danielle Steele novel. They're not in the library with these children. What I don't want, what I don't want is someone telling me what to do with my children. I'm with my, I have a seven-year-old right now, well, I have older children, but my seven-year-old and my 15-year-old, I'm with my children in the library. My children just don't run willy-nilly in the library. If they grab a book, and I look at that book and I don't like it, we put it back. My daughter, who's a chapter reader, if she grabs a book and she don't like it, I just flip it over. I look up the ISBN number on it. If I read it and I don't like it, I put it back, because I'm the parent. No one up here is going to parent my child. We plan those, we plan those children together, we're going to raise them. We're responsible for our children. No one up here is responsible for our children. When I take my children to the library, I don't expect the, I don't expect the library to raise my children. I don't expect school to raise my children. I don't expect church to raise my children. I don't expect the library to raise my children. I don't know the Commissioners, I don't know Judge Zeller. I do know Commissioner Danny Garza. He made a, he made a statement yesterday, and that statement was, his children and his grandchildren wouldn't read certain books. And I believe that. And you know why? Because Danny Garza is a hands-on parent. He's also a very hands-on grandparent. When you see his grandchildren, when I was at the school and I was his librarian, his grandchildren's librarian, when you seen him, when you seen his grandchildren, you seen his, you seen their parents, and you seen their grandparents. If you had a problem or a situation with his children or his grandchildren, you seen Danny Garcia, and you seen his wife. Why? Because he held his children accountable. He didn't make, wasn't nobody raising anybody. He held them. This, stop blaming the library for your children doing what they want to do. It is not their job, it is yours. Thank you, and have a blessed night.
Ms. Flonori? Ms. Anna Harris?
Mayor, Council, thank you for all that y'all do. I'm sure y'all do way more than all of us know. My name's Anna Harris. I'm the Executive Director of Just Us Participatory Defense. And I'm being trashy and chewing gum. I just realized that, so we're trying to move past that. So, you know, small-town city council meetings are comical, gearing me up for the 88th legislative session and public comment, so. I grew up in West Austin, and I attended the prestigious St. Andrews for elementary I remember, I was a tomboy, and I remember in grade school, the boys, we were third grade or whatever, the boys would pay this other little kid to draw them a little picture of some female genitalia to take home for the weekend. Like, there's no, the library, your kids are going to find a vagina and enjoy it at home, whether another kid draws it for them or they discover it in the library. So, I like to start things out with, my, I grew up in Austin. My parents were politicians. Ann Richards was my mom's best friend, spent lots of time with her. I'm well aware that the Commissioners Court would probably tar and feather me if they found out after their comments on Monday, if they knew that I was even sort of a liberal, which I wouldn't consider that. Old assumptions and old programs don't work in the new society, and that, and the more we try to stretch them and to make them all fit, the more we will be seen as running away from what is reality. Ann Richards. Okay, so again, please accept me for, please accept my apology for wasting you guys precious time up here today. I'm seriously disappointed in myself that I'm having to speak here today contesting the proposed banning of library books considering the current state and local affairs. Sund versus the city of Wichita Falls, this is case law. Final judgment. For the reasons stated in the court's memorandum opinion, the judgment entered in favor of the plaintiffs adjoining the defendants from enforcing the city council's Resolution 16-99, because it is unconstitutional, cost our taxes against the defendant's city of Wichita Falls. Chief Judge Butchmeyer? This case involves censorship of two acclaimed books, Heather Has Two Mommys by Leslie-
Ms. Harris, if you could wrap it up in about 15 seconds.
Oh, okay. Anyway, all the 76 cases that were banned, that banned books in Texas, all the municipalities and cities are currently in civil litigation, federal litigation. They have only, one has been won, and there's case law against it that sided with the plaintiff. This costs taxpayers millions of dollars and years in litigation. This is a, this is an uphill battle that no one's ever going to win. It's going to cost taxpayers millions.
Thank you. Ms. Gay Potte?
Greetings, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. John Adams, the Second President of the United States of America, stated our Constitution was made only for a moral and religious people. It is wholly inadequate to the government of any other. There are books in the public library from ages eight and up that have descriptions and depictions of sexually explicit acts, which are obscene according to the Texas Penal Code 43.21. An example of this obscenity is from a book in your packet that is marked number two. This book is found in our public library purchased with our taxpayer dollars for ages 12 and up. Quote, "As we kissed, he began unzipping my pants. It was clear to me in this moment that he wasn't new to this. He reached his hand down and pulled out my dick. He quickly went to giving me head. I just sat back and enjoyed it, as I could tell he was too. He was also definitely experienced in what he was doing, because he went to work quite confidently. He then came up and asked me if I wanted to try it on him. I said, 'Sure.' I began, and he said, 'Watch your teeth.'" I don't want you to let, I didn't want to let him know I was inexperienced, so I slowed down and took my time, and luckily got into a good rhythm. He didn't know I was a virgin. I did my best to act dominant, like my favorite porn star. I was an actor, and this was a movie. There are 13 pages of excerpts that are obscene and derogatory in your packet from Just Us' book alone. Love does not rejoice in what is in this book. We should be appalled. How do we justify this in the 12 and up section in our library? This is called sexualizing children. One last comment. Our newspaper has quoted Ms. Williams Capone in saying, "All of the books have been retained in the library, but all require the child's parents sign any book out when requested by a child. We follow our own policy. We state clearly that the parent signs them out as their parent and guardian. We follow the process." I've never seen this policy before. When did this go into place? And per this process, does that mean the library is not responsible at all? My question to you, is that binding in court of law? There is no way a parent can know the content of every book their student wants to check out. We have trusted our librarians for a long time. My mom was one, and she would never have allowed these books to be in the library for her children to read. Some things shouldn't change. Let children be children. And obscenity is not protected by the First Amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Potte. All right, thank you to everybody that came tonight to speak before us. Appreciate you being here. We love hearing from you on any topic. And so at this time, we're going to go on to items with the public hearing.
Item C1 is a resolution adopting the Community Development Block grant 2022-2023 One-Year Action Plan and authorizing the city manager to submit all required documentation for the fiscal year 2022-23 CDBG program to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
We can probably wait a minute, if it's okay? Just for the noise?
I'm good.
Okay.
I'm good, let's keep rolling.
This is a refresher from what was presented in June. We, as you remember, on June 1st, we gave our recommendations for this next year's funding, and so here we are tonight to actually present the plan. So, for our 2022 entitlement funding from HUD, we received $576,506. Out of that, our administration will be, is capped at 20%, which is $115,301. We will be allocating $10,000 to Affordable Housing Program, our mortgage, down payment, and closing cost assistance. And then $39,726 will go to our demolition program, and then the remainder will go to public facilities and public services, which I will identify in future slides. And it is, of course, a refresher always that our public service activities have a 15% cap, as required by HUD. So this is the low to moderate income limits for 2022. So all of these funds have to help people that fall within these income ranges, depending on the program. HUD CDBG entitlement funds are only allowed to be spent to LMI individuals or households. So our 2022 public facility recommended funding would be $160,000 to Gulf Bend for their clinic expansion, the Victoria Housing Authority to repaint Leary Lane Complex at $95,000, Boys and Girls Club office renovations at $12,800, Salvation Army dorm improvements, which you heard Mr. Kenny French speak to earlier, at $12,215, and then YMCA Child Care Center improvements at $45,464, or $64. So you'll see the population served, those population numbers are actually for just one year, but these are public facilities, so the great thing about them is they will serve actually much more than that population serves, because they will be here for a very long time. So, activities that really just have a one-year lifecycle, and that is why they're capped at 15%, is our public service activities. And so in our plan for 2022 plan year, we are recommending, are asking Council to approve Boys and Girls Club Victoria Power Hour Summer Camp at $10,000, Community Action Committee Senior Services Care Program at $8,000, Community Action Committee Wheels on Wheels Program at $8,000, the Golden Crescent Food Bank Kids Weekend Meal Program at $14,000, Golden Crescent CASA Training at $8,000, Gulf Bend Center Wellness Community for $20,000, Meals on Wheels Victoria, the Senior Center Meals on Wheels at $8,000, and then the United Way Community Connections Program for $10,000, and that makes up that $86,000, which is again capped, a 15% cap. So tonight, we are asking Council to approve this annual action plan. The public comment ran from July 2nd to August 1st, where people could give us written comments. Tonight, we have the public hearing, which any comments that we hear from tonight, we will insert into the plan in the appropriate place. If Council approves, then we will ask Jesus to sign all the certifications, and then we will upload and submit to HUD by August 16th. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Did you receive any public comment?
Mr. French is tonight.
And that was it? Okay.
Yes.
Thanks.
We also, as part of the plan, we also are required to reach out to different service providers. We have a survey, and so it's not defined as public comment in this plan, but we also have that component of the annual action plan.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to open a public hearing on item C1. I do realize we did have some speak during Citizens Communications, I just didn't catch it when I was leafing through all the deals. Nobody's wanting to get up, okay? I will close the public hearing and entertain any motions.
Motion, we approve C1, as read?
Second.
Second.
All right, motion in a second. Is there any further discussion on item C1? All those in favor of approving item C1, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries, and on to the consent agenda, Ms. Hillbrook.
Item D1 is the adoption amendments of the regular meeting of the July 19, 2022 meeting. Item D2 is an ordinance emitting and re-adopting Chapter 4 and Section 24-22 of the City Code of Ordinances to reflect the separation of the Victoria County Public Health Department and Animal Control Services. Item D3 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept a grant from Golden Crescent Regional Planning Commission for the purchase of three solar recycle compactors in the amount of $12,741. Item D4 is a resolution approving the First Amendment to the Debris Management Contract with Ashford Incorporated of Deerfield Beach, Florida. Item D5 is a resolution appointing Gilbert P. Reyna Jr., CPA, as a representative to perform the no new revenue tax rate and voter approval tax rate calculations. Item D6 is a resolution authorizing the publication of the Notice of Meeting to Vote on Tax Rate. Item D7 is a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding for, with Victoria County for the 2022 Edward Bryn Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program. Item D8 is a resolution awarding a contract with Fun of Bounds Incorporated via governmental purchasing contract for the manufacturing, delivery, and installation of the Ted B. Reed Park Playground in an amount not to exceed $182,468.20. Item D9 is a resolution approving, in addition to Task Order 7 to the city's contract with Burns and McDonnell for the permitting of the Victoria landfill expansion in an amount not to exceed $75,000. Item D10 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for drainage mowing with Bio Landscape and Maintenance Incorporated DBA Yellowstone Landscaping of Houston, Texas for their competitive sale proposal of $367,561.
Thank you, Ms. Hillbrook.
Move to approve the consent agenda as read?
A second.
And a motion in a second to approve this consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. And now, instead of going into item E1, we're going to have the city manager, and this is typically what we do, we move these forward, so he can give us the presentation on the certified tax roll and the budget. Mr. Garza?
Yeah, all right. Good afternoon.
Three minutes.
Thirty minutes, hey, let's do it. I was texting Mayor right now, letting him know we ordered some Chick-fil-A sandwiches, and so I'm standing in between you and Chick-fil-A sandwiches, so, you know. Called an audible with the sandwiches, figured Chick-fil-A would make everybody happy. There you go. All right, so it's a pleasure to be here talking to you about the budget once again. I do plan to go through it a little bit quicker, since obviously you've seen a very similar presentation at the end of June, so I'll predominantly focus on the highlights, as well as what's changed since that last presentation in June. Obviously, happy to answer any questions that you might have. And if staff is listening me speak, and they're still at City Hall, I ask them to come over here so that they can help answer questions that I might not know the answer to. Or maybe they left City Hall, I'm not sure, if they're still waiting around. So, our fiscal year 23 proposed budget could be summarized within these categories, and I'll take one at a time as we go through the slides, but obviously, as you know by law, we have to have a balanced budget, and we do. We're being mindful to the economy and all the chatter around recession, so we're staying somewhat flat with sales tax revenue. There is an opportunity to lower the property tax rate, there's an opportunity to be able to do the Phase 3 compensation program, we're adding some staff, we're reducing employee premiums on health insurance, and we're absorbing more of that to pass on some savings that we're experiencing. And of course, the CIP and streets, that's a big part of it, and that's one of the biggest changes in today's presentation compared to the one that you received in June. Really quickly, you do have in front of you, or should have in front of you, this budget highlight document that we've become now accustomed to putting together when we propose the budget. I won't go through it, but please take it with you, so it can be a quick reference and a quick guide to what I will present to you today.
On these, after we approve the budget, there will be another printing?
Yes.
So that we could all have some to carry with us?
Yes, for sure, yeah. We'll definitely have an adopted budget, you know, we keep this as proposed, because we know that there might be some things that could change between now and September. So absolutely. So, quickly, the proposed budget that you're seeing today is $183 million. That is an increase from the $176 million that I presented at the end of June, and that list here on the bottom left shows you what that is. Obviously, a big part of it is CIP. I know that the mayor and I were not here at our last meeting when Gilbert presented on both the CIP service fee and the increases to the CIP program, but those are included in here as well. There's been some minor changes to some other items, things that we missed, things that we needed to just clean up, that we noticed ourselves going through it. So you notice a small increase to professional services, a small increase to the pay program. We were able to capture an additional roughly 25- to the pay program. We were able to capture an additional roughly 25 employees in Phase 3, and so we've included that in this expense budget. On the other side, on the revenue budget, that's also changed, obviously, also because of the CIP and some of the very things that I've already talked about. One of the things that'll probably stick out to you from that list on the bottom right that's changed on the revenue side is the increase in taxes. This is an additional, close to $320,000 that we expect to receive in property tax revenue, thanks to just how things came in with our certified tax rolls. Now, as always, one of the very first things that sticks out when I show expense and revenues is why is there a difference, right? And so this slide is intended to show where that $16 million comes from, that difference between the expense and the revenue budget. And you'll see on the bottom right-hand side, that's where we're really focused on that. It's really coming from fund balance and just working capital that we have set aside for key projects. As you know, sometimes it takes years to plan for projects and actually issue those contracts. And we might budget them, you know, two fiscal years before they actually get paid out. And so we hold on to that. And that's how we end up with an expense budget that's larger than our revenue budget. And you'll notice there that it's spread out across the different construction funds. This is a breakdown that's very similar to the breakdown that you have in your highlight document. The thing to note here, of course, is a general fund, and I have a slide on the general fund a little later. But it's a $58 million general fund, which of course is where the bulk of our services is. The whole presentation looks weird, right? Yeah, it does not look anything like what Gilbert and I went through together, but it's okay. We're rolling with it. So as long as the numbers are okay, right, Gilbert? Who cares what the colors look like? All right. So a little further breakdown on the revenue front. This now shows you the comparison of the new number, the 167, as it compares to what we did in fiscal year 22. And you'll notice that it's a $10 million difference. This shows you a little bit more on where that difference comes from. You'll notice that in red, and red always sticks out, that there's a big decrease in the amount of funds that we're expecting to receive in grants. And as I mentioned in June, that's because we're not anticipating getting any more money from ARPA. ARPA obviously took up a big chunk of our last two fiscal years, and accounting for splitting that a little over $14 million. And so that's come out. You'll notice some changes in property, in revenue for taxes, which is sales tax and property tax. We'll walk through that a little bit. Service fees, we'll walk through these. And of course, CIP is always the biggest change, and we'll walk a little bit through that as well. Really quick on sales tax, as I mentioned at the beginning, we're being very conservative. We're being mindful of what we potentially can see happening in the near future with our economy. And so you'll see that we are proposing $17.3 million, which is really not that much different than what we proposed for fiscal year 22. Slight difference, only $175,000. Obviously, we hope that the trend continues. You'll notice sort of how things have come in this year, which is that projected column. And so you'll notice that we are receiving more than what we had budgeted for fiscal, for the current fiscal year that we're in now. We're obviously hoping that that trend continues, but we don't want to hold our breath because of just everything that's going on, inflation and other things that can artificially inflate these numbers that we're seeing. So very conservative with that. This is just another figure that shows the rolling 12-month average that validates our approach. And now I will, I feel like there was a slide missing, right, Gilbert? All right. So we're rolling with it. Okay. So I guess I'll talk about certified property values now. And so on the property tax side, you'll notice that overall, the really big thing that we focus on, of course, is the increase in our net taxable appraised values. And you'll notice there at the bottom that it's 11%. You may recall that last year it was 8%. And so this is good. This is what presents us an opportunity to increase revenues while decreasing tax rate, right? And so to make it official, the tax roll that we received certified has a total of $4.5 billion, which again, is an increase of 11%. One of the things that we also talk about when we break this down is what we're seeing, the trend that we're seeing with residential and commercial. And you'll see at the very top of this chart that residential is coming in at 8% increase, and commercial at 12%. You may recall that historically, there's been some issues with these things trending in opposite directions, or commercial sort of lagging behind residential, thus placing a heavier burden on our residential side of the equation. This, of course, addresses a little bit of that. Part of it is, of course, the caterpillar piece that's coming off, the abatement and coming on the books, I should say. And so we specifically highlight that impact here on the left-hand side to give you a sense of how much of that is associated with that caterpillar abatement coming on the rolls. I won't go through everything else on this chart, but happy to answer any questions that you might have on the certified values. Okay. It's not moving. It's okay, Gilbert. I can hear you sighing. It's okay. He put a lot of work into making the presentation look really nice, and it's not coming through the way that it is. All right. So if there are no questions on the tax rule, we'll talk a little bit about tax rate. As we've alluded to, there's an opportunity to decrease the property tax rate. We are proposing a reduction in 3 cents. And so we are proposing that a tax rate of .5582, which is a reduction, again, of 3 cents from the .5882 that we have now. You'll notice that this means a decrease across the board, meaning both on the debt side and on the MNO side. And at the very bottom is a little bit of the more important piece, which kind of breaks down the fact that the $1.37 million in new revenue that we anticipate receiving, the fact that almost half of that is associated with new improvements. We talked about at the end of June, doing a redemption bond program of $600,000, but we're actually recommending that now being 500, simply because of how the certified tax rolls came in. We don't have to be as aggressive, because obviously, as appraisals go up, that in itself creates opportunities for additional debt capacity. And so we felt it was appropriate to do 500,000 versus 600,000. And one of the things that I mentioned at the end of June, too, is this balancing act between what percentage of your revenue is MNO versus debt. And we are beginning to see a larger percentage on the MNO side. Any questions on the property tax rate? No? All right. Impact. You'll notice if I go back to this slide, that residential went up 8% across the board. And so we used 8% on this slide to represent what that impact would be to different property owners. As I mentioned in June, if your property values, you know, went up only a few percentage points, you're probably not going to see an increase in which you pay, or might even see a decrease. It all just depends on your situation. But we wanted to be transparent with the impact. And so here you could see how $200,000 appraised value. And if that went up 8%, that that would equate to roughly $30 additional in property tax revenue on a yearly basis, or roughly $2.44 monthly. And obviously, you could do the math on whatever your situation is. Here it is. On sales tax and property tax, I thought this slide was like five slides sooner. We added this slide because we wanted to show you the importance of property tax revenue as opposed to sales tax. We talk all the time about how sales tax is very volatile, and makes it very hard for us to plan. It makes it very hard for us to do things like compensation, improvements, pay programs, et cetera, solely based off of sales tax revenue, because we just don't know what's going to happen with that. And so it's critical and important that the foundation of our budget and some of the ongoing recurring expenditures, we can rely on that property tax revenue. And so this is just to show you that trend. And you can start to see the yellow line gradually increasing a little better on the right-hand side. The one thing that I thought was interesting when Gilbert first showed me this slide was the fact that 20 years ago, in case you're wondering, 20 years ago, our property tax rate was 70 cents. Good thing none of us were here then, right? I mentioned earlier the impact of the service fee variances. You heard staff talk about a lot of these, and I'm not going to go through it in detail. But you heard a lot of directors go through their budgets, talk about IT fees specifically. They talked a little bit about, you know, the fuel. They talked about vehicles. I'm not going to walk you through that, but just know that collectively, all of this had an impact of $2.6 million. On the CIP side, as you know, every year, CIP looks different. Sometimes it's utility-centric, sometimes it's street-centric. It just depends on just how our CIP falls. In this instance, you'll notice that there's a decrease in the transfer from the general fund to the CIP. That's planned. That's expected. You'll notice that we're removing $7 million from UHB. Obviously, this next fiscal year, we're not getting money from UHB. That, of course, was for the Ben Wilson project. So some of these begin to reflect just where we're shifting on the CIP side. On the expense side, comparatively speaking, to fiscal year 22, where we were at 171, you'll see that we're at 183, $12 million difference. This kind of talks a little bit about what that's made up of. I've already talked about the grants and how that's coming out. We are no longer doing a transfer to the stabilization fund. And so some of that is accounted for in the small figures in red at the bottom. And on the expenditure side, of course, the CIP is a big component of that. Personnel, I'll hit on that, since that's a big part of it, as well as of a couple of other things like fuel and those expenditures that we're beginning to see go up. On the pay program, really quick, when I showed this to you in June, it was 1.8. Now it's 1.9 because of that small increase that I referenced earlier, where we were able to add roughly another 25 employees to be part of Phase 3. As you can imagine, with inflation and everything else that's going on, we're trying to do the best we can to have as many employees see a pay increase without it necessarily going against our overall strategy of trying to address the inequity and sort of the compression issues that exist within our organization. Because as you know, and as I've said, and I've said to employees, if everybody gets 3%, that doesn't fix anything, right? If somebody's ahead of market, somebody's behind market, if somebody's been here 10 years, and somebody's been one year, and they're making the same amount of money, everybody gets 3%, it doesn't fix anything. And so we're trying to be sensitive to having a pay program that can balance both, where we can have employees obviously get a pay increase, whether it's cost of living or otherwise, while at the same time, addressing the issues that we're trying to address with our overall structure. Anyways, I could talk about that for days. But overall, that program was 1.9. This simply is a breakdown of the different aspects of that. PD and Fire is a big one, so I'll spend a quick 10 seconds talking about that. Cheryl and I could not think of any time in the history of our organization where PD and Fire were properly compensated in the step program for the years of experience. And this pay program specifically does that. Both command staffs for both police and fire are very adamant on day one, when I arrived a little over three years ago, that this is one of the biggest issues impacting morale and otherwise within the departments, right? Where somebody's been here 15 years, making as much as somebody that's been here five years, right? So it's important for us to account and be sensitive to the tenure of our police and fire folks. Now, obviously, that's an issue that we have across the board, not just police and fire. But this phase allows us the ability to start addressing that issue with police and fire. So very proud of that. Because again, we don't think that's ever actually been the case. Now, obviously, we're probably still behind market, right? It's going to be impossible for us to pay what a San Antonio pays, Houston pays. But we want to make sure that at least internally, we have that experience accounted for. We're adding 13 positions. I'm not going to go through them in detail. We went through them in June. Other than to say that the positions with the stars are positions that are funded either through sales tax, hotel tax, or general fund in general. And so we're waiting until January to hire for those positions, just to kind of keep, give us the rest of the calendar year to track what might be going on with the economy. Obviously, if things go bad, then we just don't proceed, and no harm done, no harm, no foul, right? We added this slide at this point of the presentation simply to highlight the fact that we not only are, have a pay program where some employees will receive 3% increase or otherwise, roughly on average, that's what it would be, but we're going to decrease premiums. And so you'll notice that, for example, if an employee has their family on our plan, they're going to see a decrease in premiums of $1,800 a year. And so that could be seen as a pay increase, simply because that's more money in the pocket of our employees that isn't having to go towards health insurance. Obviously, that's pre-tax. But this helps, especially with where we are with inflation and everything else. Really quickly, again, I'm on the expenditure section of the presentation. So on the expenditure section of the presentation, the CIP transfers are less coming out of the general fund, as I mentioned. As I mentioned in June, fiscal year 22 provided an opportunity to do a historic transfer to the CIP, which you heard our auditor talk about when she gave her presentation a couple of months ago, that the audited numbers at the end of fiscal year 22, you know, had a fund balance of over 40%, right? While some of that are projects that are encumbered. What? Well, he already removed, he already removed encumbered projects and transfers and everything else, right? But you heard her, I think, say 46 or something like that. And that's because we were accounting for doing this historic transfer. And this helps explain that part of it. CIP, I won't spend a lot of time on it. You're familiar with the CIP. We talk about it all the time. Other than to say that even though there's a decrease in residential streets, we are addressing more streets in terms of miles next year. The reason why you see a reduction in residential streets here specifically is because we no longer are doing these neighborhood reconstruction projects that we had going on this fiscal year, think away, right? Fiscal year 23 is going to be a very utility-centric CIP. Fiscal year 24 will be a very heavily centric street reconstruction year. And so that's why you see the reduction in residential. And you see a reduction in thoroughfare streets, not because the mileage is going down, but because of Mill and Overlay. Mill and Overlay is way cheaper than complete reconstruct, and it allows us the ability to do more miles for less money. This is just to paint the picture, right, that we're investing more into CIP. And I think this is a good, this is a good thing. And hopefully, you and members of our community are beginning to see the tangible results of the fact that we're investing more into our CIP program. When I showed you the table on the debt service rate, I mentioned that that was going down. This is a new slide with a new graph, graphs on the right, simply to show you, those are years at the bottom, the fact that this debt obligation goes down. And obviously, as we go back to getting into our quarterly workshops, we'll update debt capacity and all of that. But this is just to remind you that this debt service variance is a planned because of just debt coming off the books. And you could see, going into the latter part of this decade, how those debt service commitments and rate just continue to go down, right? And so that equates to opportunity in the CIP, of course. Talked about fuel. That's a big one that I get asked about all the time. So increasing fuel by 27%. You heard staff talk about the increases in software, and so I won't spend time on that. And you saw at our, I think it was our two meetings ago, right, just the cost of all the chemicals that we do at Public Works. Next year, Allison said she's going to read all of those to you. But we expect an increase in those items as well. So I'm going to skip through some of, some slides, just to kind of get us through the presentation. On the general fund side, I love showing this wheel, but this is just to show you that in fiscal year 22, it was 60 million, and now it's 58. And I want to put a caveat in that, that a big reason for that is, of course, that large CIP transfer that we did in fiscal year 22, that we are not doing in fiscal year 23. That's why that's in red at the bottom, and red here, because that is a large reduction that's coming from the general fund. But obviously, there are some elements of the general fund that are going up, personnel, professional services, internal charges like IT and others. And so those are the tan-colored items on the right-hand side. And I apologize, that the bottom is hard to read. I assure you that Gilbert's work of art had this being more legible. I'll skip through a couple of these slides, because you've seen them. On the utility fund side, I'm simply going to convey that in fiscal year 22, it was 37 million, and now it's 52 million. And so as I mentioned earlier, fiscal year 23 is a heavy utility-centric CIP year. And so you see that at the bottom tan bar graph, that the CIP program is taking up the chunk of that. And so we're beginning to see neighborhoods see that utility work, right? And so we have, like Tanglewood Phase 1, for example, the construction of that utility work is in here, as well as a couple of other neighborhoods. Same story. And so I won't spend too much time, personnel, maintenance, fuel, chemicals. We're seeing increases in those areas and the CIP, and a reduction in the debt part. On the revenue side, we're also seeing a $13 million increase for the utility fund. This is hard for me to read, even up here on my monitor. But you start getting a sense of the fact that it's all centered around the CIP. We obviously transfer money to help with that. On my services fund, I do want to briefly mention a quick change that Darrell talked about during his presentation in June, which of course, was the increase of a dollar to the additional cart fee. I think it's important just to be transparent with that, and transparent with the fact that we are not touching water or wastewater rates in this next year's in this next year's budget. We do have some funds in the budget to do a more comprehensive rate study analysis next fiscal year to look at water, wastewater and start looking at potentially a stormwater fund. We've historically have not done these at the same time. And Gilbert, you can correct me if I'm wrong on that. And so we want to take advantage of looking at the big picture around all of this in order to give us a good sense of are we headed in the right direction? What opportunities are there to reduce here or there? Is there an opportunity to have capacity to incorporate a stormwater fund? Something that we desperately could use because as you know, drainage is a challenge throughout our community and we don't have a dedicated funding source for that. So we'll see what that study comes up with. But going back to environmental services, it's a pretty flat budget. So I'll just fly through it, but I simply wanted to remind you of that increase in a dollar for that extra cart. This is looking a little better than what I showed you in June. In June, this had the estimated fund balance pre us doing the reduction program of 5.8. And so things are trending really good with this program because we estimate it now at 6. I talked about this program that will cost us roughly $419,000 that we're passing on that savings over to our employees. And again, just to reiterate this, I'm not going to go through it, but this is just another chart showing you those reductions for the different categories of our health plan. And once we take that, that 420, it drops it down to 5.6, but that's still a healthy fund. You can see the trend. And so we feel really good about where we are with the health fund currently. Hotel tax fund, I won't spend too much time on it, other than to convey that we are being conservative with this as well, because this is another one of those items that potentially could be impacted also with a recession. And so we literally are budgeting the same amount of money in fiscal year 23 than what we budgeted in fiscal year 22. And you can see a little bit about how we envision spending, oops, those dollars, sorry. Those dollars on the left hand side. Joel will talk a little bit more about the outside agency funding later in the meeting. But you get a sense of all of the different things that this fund funds. Of course, our CVB operation, Main Street, Community Center. It funds a lot of different programs. And so we do intend to have a conversation with you, a more strategic conversation with you about the long term vision for what to do with this money. Gilbert and I agree that we're getting to the point where we're beginning to probably spread ourselves a little bit too thin with how we're diversifying the usage of the motel tax dollars. And so I do foresee maybe through our quarterly workshops over the course of the rest of this year, having a strategic conversation with you about prioritization of the usage of motel tax dollars. We'd rather be, or I personally rather us be great at a few things, right? Than be mediocre at a lot of things. And so I think with this fund, we need to really have a conversation around priorities. But that'll come later. For now, this is the breakdown for next year. Moving forward, we're obviously keeping an eye on our compensation program. We're suffering from the great resignation. We have overnight vacancies. And so for those listening, go to our website, apply. We want you to come be part of our work family. We know compensation isn't the only thing that's impacting that, but we want to be sensitive to the fact that competition wise, there's a lot of changes in the market. And so we want to make sure that we keep up as best as possible. The health plan will continue to produce savings for us. And so we're going to keep an eye on that. There will be an opportunity for us to revamp our health insurance plans over the course of the next year. I've been very transparent with employees that this is now the time to look at our plans, right? Historically, plans have been designed and looked at when you're strapped for cash, right? And nothing good comes out of something when you're putting it together, designing it, when you're in a mode of desperation for cash, right? And so the fact that our health fund is healthy right now will provide a good opportunity to do that. So we'll keep an eye on that moving forward. The CIP, obviously with things like Public Safety Headquarters Facility and just inflation in general, we'll be mindful of that. We do continue to focus on master planning efforts. And so this budget has a sports facility master plan component to it. And so we will be hiring a company to come in and look at our ballparks, community center, a couple of other things, soccer. We intentionally left those things out of the parks master plan because there are more subject matter expert firms that focus on sports tourism and sports facilities that we want to bring in to help us look at that. And through our MPO, we're going to be going through an active transportation plan. One, to be part, hopefully of benefiting from some grant dollars that are coming out that require an active transportation plan, but really looking at diversifying just how people get around and being more intentional with that. And of course, economic development's a big priority of ours. Moving forward, this is the timeline for the rest or the next two months. Of course, today, delivering the budget, delivering the certified tax rolls. There'll be a couple of agenda items that Gilbert will spearhead here in a few minutes, associated with the tax rate. On August 16th, we'll have a work session, should you have any questions, concerns. On August 30th, we'll have a special meeting. We'll make sure, in April, we'll make sure that that's all on all of yours calendars, where some of the official public hearings are scheduled for that day. And then September 6th, which is a regular meeting for us, we'll have final vote on budget as well as the tax rate. And of course, it goes into effect October 1. If through the course of this timeline, there are changes, keep in mind that there are timelines that we need to meet. And this is why intentionally we give ourselves the rest of September in case something changes. And we need to schedule some special meetings before October 1st, since we do legally have to adopt the budget by the end of September. With that, happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Jake Fleisch.
Yeah, I don't know. It did? It did, all right. So before I get off, I do want to really quickly, I don't know if they're here. Well, yeah. Really quickly, shout out to the finance department. The budget document is a labor of love. And even though we've transitioned to a more, I guess, modern way of doing it by not being as paper intensive, it still requires a lot of work, as you can imagine, to input the information, manipulate everything around it. And so Laura and Wesley, who are sitting in the back, being super shy. They're super involved with this process. Billy in finance is involved with the process, Sarah in finance is involved with the process. And so I just want to thank them publicly for all their hard work and putting the budget together. Because we literally, I literally could not do it without them. Yeah, so they deserve all the credit. I'm just the face that gets to talk about all the great things that are going on. So thank you, Laura, Wesley, Gilbert and Billy and Sarah who are.